Hey, everyone, welcome. We'll get started in a little bit. Once I see we're on air and recording, we'll get started. It's so awesome to have you here. Welcome.
Blanca, could I have your help for a second? Thank you.
And I know we're still waiting for the, to go on air, so. There we go. All right, we are recording and on air, so I will get us started. Good evening, everyone. I will call our regular city council meeting to order of June 22nd, being held here in person at City Hall. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So for all of you that are able to stand, please do join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is our open forum. So if we have folks that are here today for the open forum, you can see our executive analyst, Martinez Gavino. Oh, there she is sitting right there, and she has some cards if you want to come and speak at the open forum. This is a time for anybody, residents or anyone who wants to come speak for up to three minutes on any item that you would like to speak. We don't have a conversation, but it's a chance for you to just share anything you'd like to share. Sometimes, mostly, we get complaints. Sometimes, we get people telling us stories, but it's just a time for the public to come and speak. And then, do we also, are we also taking folks on the phone as well for the open forum? Yes, we are. And do we have anybody here on the line for the open forum?
Mayor, I do not currently have anybody on the line, but if you'd like to review the phone number of the 0651, that'd be great.
Yes, and the phone number that folks can call is 612-861-0516, if you do want to call. And I do know we have one person here in person who would like to speak, so we'll also wait to see if anyone else wants to join.
Mayor, the call number is 0651.
Oh, sorry. 0651 are the last digits. Thank you. And we have Barb Ruff, I believe, if you want to come to the microphone here. And if you could, please state your name and your address, and then you have three, up to three minutes to speak.
And can I mention two things?
Of course.
I'm Barb Ruff, 6915 Third Avenue South, and just have two observations that I would like people to consider as time goes on. I think we are increasing the population of Richfield with a lot of our multifamily dwellings, and with that, we should probably increase our police force to keep a similar ratio of number of police per citizens. That's my first comment. My second comment would be to monitor billboards around town. I have noted some with inappropriate images, and I think we don't want that displayed in our city limits.
Thank you so much. Any other folks here in person who would like to speak at our open forum? Okay, and then assistant, when? Do we have anybody on the phone?
Mayor, I do not have anybody online.
Okay, seeing as we have nobody else here for our open forum, I will close our open forum and go to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the city council work session of June 8th, 2021, and the city council meeting of June 8th, 2021.
Madam Mayor, I'll move approval. I just want to note that the minutes from the city council meeting of June 8th have been modified at my request, and I am moving that we approve the version that's currently in front of us and is currently online. And it just updated some information about an exchange between me and staff regarding one of the items.
Thank you.
I'll second that, and also with those same changes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Any comments or questions on the approval of the minutes? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The minutes have passed. Thank you. The next item is going to be something I'm very excited about, so. So we have a presentation tonight with the wonderful students of Blessed Trinity School here in Richfield. So we're welcoming our 7th grade students from Blessed Trinity, who did an exceptional job at the regional and state science fairs. Of the 24 students who entered the regional science fair, 19 were selected to attend the science, the state science fair, and an additional three were selected as alternates. The school also had five students win awards at the state science fair, and eight students receive awards at the regional science fair. Furthermore, their teacher, Mr. Brian Stock, was presented with the Teacher Excellence Award. Mr. Stock, who is also a Richfield resident, could not join us this evening, and he's taking college tours with his kids right now. So the Blessed Trinity students reflect the wonderful diversity that makes up our community, and I see here that we have 44% of the students have, speak a language other than English at their home as well. And now I want to read a little bit of, I want to read the awards and the students who received these top honors. And if each student could please stand when your name is called, that would be greatly appreciated. Minnesota State Fair Awards. The grand award and the silver, which was top 10 projects, was Cassidy Gaston. If Cassidy Gaston is here. The next award was the grand award, and the category was bronze, which was the top 15% of projects, and that went to Lila Martin and Caitlin Tepley. The Seagate Emerging Scientist Award, Cassidy Gaston. The 3M Innovation Award, which was an honorable mention, went to Carrie Chimbo. The Graduate Women in Science Award went to Ellie Foley. And the Broadcom Masters Award went to Cassidy Gaston. We have other award recipients as well for the Regional Science Fair Awards. The 3M Inventor Recognition went to Lila Martin. The Graduate Women in Science Paper Award went to Caitlin Tulp. The Award for Science Potential went to Chipo Chincoro. The American Meteorological Society Award went to Ruby Escobar. The National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration Award went to Ruby Escobar. The Association of Women Geoscientists Award went to Cassidy Gaston. The NASA Earth Systems Science Award went to Cassidy Gaston. The Broadcom Masters Program Nomination went to Elias de Crans, Ian Fuls, and Caitlin Tulp. And then, the Teacher of Excellent Award went to Mr. Brian Stock. And then, lastly, the following students were selected to compete at the Minnesota State Science Fair. Lori Bayen, Victor Cardvajal Estada, Keisha Karen, Carrie Chimbo, Chipo Chincoro, Elias de Cran, Marco De Leon, Joseph Dougblair, Michael Alfreding, Ellie Foley, Ian Fuls, Cassidy Gaston, Giselle Gasco, Poor Carr, Eleanor Cuco, Lila Martin, William Matson, Kayla Miller, Nathan Nguyen, Edwin Portillo, Christopher Sosa Escobar, Caitlin Tulp, Ashley Vega. Please help me in congratulating all of the students and their accomplishments this year. All right, so do the students want to come together here? And we can take a big picture of all of you, and then we can send that to you and your families as well. And I don't know if there's anybody here from the parents or teachers that would like to come and say a few words, but we are so proud of the students from Blessed Trinity. You guys have done an exceptional job. So did you want to come and say a few words? Please do. Yeah, you can, you can speak quick. Well, why don't we take the picture and then you want to come and speak? Let's do that.
And on behalf of our students and our families, my name is Patrick O'Keefe. I'm the principal at Blessed Trinity Catholic School, and we are just so delighted. Thank you, Mayor Regan Gonzalez, and council members for having us tonight to celebrate our students' success and the work that they did this spring, and particularly in a bit of an unusual school year, as you might imagine. We are so proud of the science fair program and what's being done at Blessed Trinity. This goes well back before me and is really a credit to Mr. Stock, who couldn't be with us, and he was so sad that he couldn't join us tonight to be able to do this, because he's been working at this for many, many years with our 7th graders. But going back four years ago now, we were really proud because we had always had some success and some students make the state science fair, one and two at a time. And we had a class that had sent five to the state science fair, and we thought that was amazing, and we were so proud of our students and their hard work. And the next year's class decided that wasn't enough, so they sent 11 onto the state science fair in that year. And then, last year, and all the oddities of last spring, we still had eight students qualify for a science fair that couldn't happen, and so they were so bummed out. And it's become the tradition, because many of the students in this class, I'm looking at some of you, have older siblings, so you can never have a project that doesn't go further than your sibling's project. Our 32 students put together their fair, which they present to themselves and their classes and the students in our school, and they earn the recognition to go on, and 24 of them decided to go to the regional science fair, and we were completely blown away by this class, because 22 of them ultimately made the state science fair this year from our community here in Richfield, which is such a credit to the hard work they put in and all the effort of their families sitting in the back, and we are just so delighted. So thank you very much for giving us the chance to be here and to recognize them and their hard work and all the learning that goes into developing their projects, where they studied how soil erosion is affected by plants, and the effect of fast-acting sugars on diabetes, and on how homemade Clorox wipes work differently than store-bought ones, which seemed pretty timely this particular year. So thank you, 7th graders, and thank you for an excuse to brag about you, because we love you and you're amazing. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the story and the context of all these amazing students and leaders that we have in front of us today. Is anybody else, would anybody else like to say anything, come up and speak, and embarrass our students, since you get the microphone and you get the chance? No? All right, well, I just want to say, you all are a huge inspiration. It is so amazing to see all of you. There's so many amazing, young, powerful women here, so many men, so many, so much beautiful diversity, and you all are just very inspiring to me personally. Our youth, you guys are the leaders of today, literally today. You guys, the work that you're doing and the achievements that you're succeeding at right now is paving the way for a bright future for yourself, for your families, for our entire community, and I thank your parents and your school community and all of those that have supported your work and your success, and know that you have a whole community supporting you and that cares about you and is really encouraging your leadership, and we want to see you grow and succeed and thrive. And we are tremendously proud of everything you've done. I'm just looking at some of these awards. I will tell you, I wanted to be a soil scientist, and I wanted to work in water remediation, and I went to college for that, and I failed my classes. I failed chemistry, I failed calculus, and I guess it just wasn't in the cards. So I worked in public policy, and I flourished, and I thrived, and I loved it, but you all have a quality and experience and so many skills in leadership that I don't have, and I'm very thankful for, for your work. So no, you have a community here that supports you, and we are very, very proud of you. So council members, is there anything you'd like to share and say to our students?
I'll keep it short and sweet. You are rock stars. Congratulations.
I just want to add, I can't help but think of maybe a year ago, several months ago, hosting a recognition and celebration of, blanking on, Dr. Mark Jenkins is his name? Yes, someone nearing the end of a career in science and celebrating the legacy that he's left, that it feels wonderful to be celebrating. This may not be at all the field you intend to go in, or you may try and change course, as our mayor was saying, but that to celebrate what you're already leaning on and where you may go next is very exciting. So I encourage you, if this, this does feel like something you're really thrilled about and excited to explore and to make your life's work, just want to encourage that and to keep, keep doing experiments. See what works, see what happens, and maintain that curiosity.
I will just echo, congratulations. It sounds like, especially with not being able to do it last year, this sounds like a really awesome success, so great job.
Congratulations to all our students, and thank you all for coming. You are more than welcome to stick around for council meetings. They're a little boring, but you might be really into them. I'm into them, but, so thank you so much. Thank you to the parents and the families that are here, and then we will make sure to get the pictures that our communications staff, Neil, took. So we'll get those to you and your families. Thank you so much and congratulations. All right, the next item is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move approval of the agenda.
Second?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. The next item is our consent calendar, and that goes to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider the approval of a small wireless facility colocation supplemental agreement with Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, I'm sorry, Verizon Wireless, that set forth the terms and conditions of colocation on wireless support structures within the city right away. Item B, consider the approval of an art installation at the Roundabout at 67th Street and Lyndale Avenue that would be a collaboration with the Ritual Arts Commission, the Spread the Sunshine Gang, and city departments in support and celebration of pride, and LGBTQIA+ community. Item B, I'm sorry, item C, consider the approval of an organic drop-off site agreement between House of Prayer Lutheran Church and the City of Bridge, Richfield. And that is all of our items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Thank you, City Manager. Is there a motion for this consent calendar?
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
A second.
The consent calendar motion has been made by Councilmember Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Are there any council discussion items on the consent calendar, Councilmember Supple?
I was just really excited to see the artwork that's going to be going in at the roundabouts, and I was at the Arts Commission meeting when they talked about this current one that we're approving, plus ideas for other ones, and I think it's a great thing to have in those roundabouts, so thank you.
Any other comments?
I also wanted to comment. I'm excited for Downtown Richfield to get, to get a pride about, so I think this is going to be a neat little feature, so I'm glad to see that.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The consent calendar is passed. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple, and before we go to the item, I'm realizing, does any, do the council members know, we got this letter from Commander Siemens. Is that to be read as a part of the item number five or item number six?
I would think it would apply to six.
Okay. And Councilmember Wayland, do you mind reading it with your item, just because I'm having a little trouble?
So you want me to go ahead with five?
Yep.
All right, item number five is to consider the second reading of an ordinance rezoning 23 properties in the vicinity of Veterans Memorial Park in order to be consistent with the adopted 2040 Comprehensive Plan and a resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance. The proposed ordinance changes zoning designations of properties generally along 66th Street and Portland Avenue to either a multifamily or commercial zoning designation in order to allow for more intense development in the future. In 2018, the city adopted a final Richfield Comprehensive Plan to guide future growth within the city. This plan is meant to inform decisions regarding land use, transportation, parks, and public facilities. Cities are required by state law to ensure that their zoning ordinances are in compliance with their plan. This includes changing the zoning designation or rezoning of properties when necessary to align with the plan. More recently, the city commissioned a study to determine the appropriate land use controls for the area in the vicinity of Veterans Park. The city council will also consider the Veterans Park Area Study and a second reading of the accompanying ordinance to establish an overlay zoning district at the same meeting as this item. The proposed overlay district relies on the properties in the study area being zoned for the uses contemplated by the Comprehensive Plan. City staff has identified 23 properties within the study area where the current zoning designation does not align with the recommended medium-density residential, high-density residential, or community commercial uses prescribed by the Comprehensive Plan. The proposed ordinance would rezone those 23 identified properties to the corresponding zoning designations of multifamily residential, high-density residential, and general business. Regardless of the city's decision on the study and the overlay district, staff recommends approval of the proposed zoning in order to achieve compliance with the Comprehensive Plan that is required by the state law. Does staff have anything they want to add?
Mayor, members of the council, I do not, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the changes.
I did have one thing. Can you clarify? Just, it's been stated before, but when we do this rezoning, the people that are there are kind of grand-parented in, correct? They're not going to be forced to change?
That is correct. They'll obtain legally non-conforming status, which will allow them to continue using the property as they are indefinitely. It would allow them to sell to someone who would continue to use the property in the same manner. These, these rules would take place if they decided to sell to someone who chose to do something different on that property, only if they chose to do that is when these would apply.
Thank you. Then I would move to approve a second reading of an ordinance rezoning 23 properties in the vicinity of Veterans Memorial Park to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, and also to approve a resolution authorizing summary of publication of said ordinance.
Second?
There we go. The motion has been made by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Are there any council comments or questions?
I guess I just want to say that I still, you know, getting people into non-conforming status is not as desirable as being in a condition where you are allowed as of the designation that you're in. So although, yeah, I appreciate staff's comment that nobody's being forced out, it does limit what can be done in the property in the future as, as a single-family home, and that's not necessarily bad, but I do worry about that in the context of rezoning this to something that isn't being built much. That said, you have heard that from me, and I think it's better addressed in other ways. So this is technically correct. It does align with the Comprehensive Plan. I will vote for it, but I do worry that the immediate outcome does not benefit this neighborhood.
Other questions or discussion from council? So I see that there's a question in the audience. I will say this is not a public hearing, but if you would like to ask a question briefly, do you have a question? If, if you'd like to come to the microphone.
Is, is there a, a different time that we are to come to ask questions?
On this item?
Well, in general, but, and on this item specifically, I guess.
Yep, so if you have questions, you can email us or call any one of us, and we can follow up with you directly on any item, and then on certain items, there are opportunities for public hearings, and then in the open forum, if you do ask a specific question, our staff can respond to you. They'll follow up with you after your, your comment, but you can contact us at any time with, with questions.
Okay, so what we would do is send an email or fill out a form ahead of time?
Yep, yep, or you can call any one of your council members as well, or if there's an item on the agenda that has a public hearing, you can come and speak during that time on that item, too.
And we would see that by looking on the website, is that right? Okay.
Mayor, if I could just add that these zoning items, the Planning Commission does the public hearing, so I would keep an eye on the Planning Commission agenda for these, because your best chance is to, to comment at that point.
Okay, so watch the Planning Commission for their meetings.
Yeah, in addition.
And just so I understand what you're talking about, these 23 properties, they are currently single-family, and you're voting to change them to multi-purpose or multifamily dwelling, right?
I don't think all, I think it's 23 total rezonings, but maybe staff could.
Madam, Madam Mayor, you can, I'll just address the notifications first. So this particular item, there was a public hearing. It was held May 24th at the Planning Commission. Everyone in the area within 500 feet got a postcard letting them know that they could come and.
Everyone in the area within 500 feet got a postcard letting them know that they could come and comment at that particular meeting. On this particular item, there was zoning 23 properties. Some of them are to multifamily, some of them are to commercial, some are existing commercial that are getting a new zoning district. There are several changes, all in the area of Veterans Park.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council members on the item? Go ahead, Councilmember.
I'd just briefly say I agree with Councilmember Hayford O'Leary's comment that this probably is not the, this immediate item is not the time to discuss this, but I would welcome further conversation about if this medium-density residential is, I mean, as we have in like the work session. I guess that was more about duplexes earlier this year. But I do think that ongoing conversation about this sort of missing middle that we've talked about is worth doing, but don't know that, and I guess I agree with the assessment that I don't think it is likely to happen in the near term. But yes, agreed, I would say that the time to address that is in further conversations about how do we increase the likelihood or ability for some of this medium-density housing that the community is looking for and needs? How do we continue to encourage that?
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Other comments from council? All right. All, okay, now, can you remind me who made the motion and seconded? I already repeated.
I made the motion and I believe Councilmember Wayland seconded.
So the motion was made by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. We had some council discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the motion is passed. Next item, number six, goes to Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to consider approval of a resolution adopting the attached Portland and 66th SubArea Study, a second reading of an ordinance establishing regulations for a new Veterans Park Area Overlay District, and rezoning properties within the Veterans Park area to be subject to said regulations. And lastly, a resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance. On December 8th, 2020, city council adopted a seven-month moratorium on land use applications for many properties in the area surrounding Veterans Park. The moratorium provided time to conduct a planning study and evaluate whether or not current zoning regulations were consistent with the 2040 Comp Plan and would effectively guide development in this specific area. After six months of outreach and research, staff is recommending council approve the Portland and 66th SubArea Study and adopt the attached ordinance creating the Veterans Park Area Overlay Zoning District. Together, the study and overlay district will guide future development and ensure that private and public investments in the area work together for mutual benefit. The attached study documents the engagement process undertaken, the existing policy analysis, and then describes the development principles and overlay district regulations recommended for adoption. And for people listening, this is available on the website on the agendas page. The proposed development principles are intended to help express communities' expectations for development in the area of Veterans Park and were developed using community input and direction from city staff and elected leaders. In order to achieve the development principles, the creation of an overlay district is recommended. The overlay district's regulations will modify the underlying or base zoning regulations to specifically adapt to this unique area. The regulations of the underlying district will apply unless specifically modified by the overlay district. The full regulations are available in the attached ordinance, but primary changes include allowing some mixing of residential and commercial uses within single buildings, allowing multiple buildings on exceptionally large parcels greater than two acres, requiring a variety of housing types and larger developments, reducing front yard setbacks along major thoroughfares, and specifically requiring landscaping of rear and side setback areas adjacent to Veterans Park, requiring pedestrian connections along site perimeters in order to provide connections between public streets and public amenities, increasing allowable height by five feet to accommodate potential ground floor commercial in the high-density residential or MR3 district, but also adding step-back requirements for frontages along public streets and public land, and then requiring a tree preservation and shadow study as part of all development applications adjacent to Veterans Park. Based on the June 8th council action and discussion, the following modifications have been made. The development principle about park and neighborhood connectivity has been modified to incorporate the words wheelchair and walker. The principle addressing quantity of parking has been modified to add while limiting neighborhood impacts. And we also added a requirement to submit a bird collision reduction plan as a part of new or substantially new development application. The proposed zoning overlay district will apply to future development. It does not require any changes to existing parcels. If and when properties owners in the area decide to sell to a developer or redevelop their land on their own, the new regulations would apply. So I know we discussed this last time and that was fairly detailed already, but does staff have anything to add?
Mayor, members of the council, the only thing I'll add is that the moratorium is scheduled to expire on Thursday. So we're bringing these to, in order to get them in place prior to the expiration of that moratorium.
Thank you. And then given one of the key community partners who is considering redevelopment at the moment is the American Legion Post, we had some commentary from, forgetting, it's Commander Siemens. Sorry. So I will, I will read that this was sent to the mayor and council. "On behalf of Post 435, thank you for the opportunity to submit these remarks and for allowing Post 435 to participate as part of the study input process. Post 435 acknowledges the successful efforts by the city completing the moratorium study process within the seven-month window. The Post is celebrating its 95th year strong in 2021. As Post Commander, I continue to lead our veteran service organization comprised of over 1,400 men and women dedicated in their unwavering commitment to support nonprofits, youth, community, and civic organizations, serving Richfield through the fundraising of donations and countless hours of volunteer service. Today, Post 435 veterans span over 80 decades of having served their country proudly, from World War II service veterans to the most recent elected Post leadership member on deployment. Over 400 legionnaires and their families, including myself, are residents of Richfield. In late 2020, Post Leadership began a planning process focused on the long-term viability of our American Legion. For 2021, the American Legion is now on track for a full financial and organizational recovery. With courage and strength as our cornerstone, American Legion Post 435 is emerging as a stronger organization on a new path that promises a thriving and prosperous long-term future. Toward that end, Post Leadership has established the following priority redevelopment principles for our Portland location. Priority one, the Portland property will be Post 435's home for the next generation of veterans by embracing these principles. A high-profile, prominent, physical standalone building will continue to serve as the focus point for all traditional and new community and patriotic programming priorities, such as community impact fundraisers, special events, and inside-outside venue. Raising funds for local food shelves and other nonprofits that provide those veterans and area families with monetary assistance to meet their basic daily living needs. Continue promoting Americanism and patriotism throughout the community via the Post's youth and other nonprofit programming. For example, retiring of the American Flag Ceremony performed by local area Eagle/Boy Scout troops in the Post 435 parking lot with full honor guard service. Bar/kitchen/food services that include sharing physical space for breakfast fundraisers sponsored by Post 435 and other veteran and other community service organizations will utilize Post 435 physical space to raise funds for their own nonprofit organization. Weekly or monthly meeting location for over 17-plus different veterans, civics, and community organizations with an average participation of 30 to 100 individuals per meeting, including the League of Women Voters at no charge, World War II Veterans 100th Birthday Celebration Open House at no charge, group therapy/socialization sessions, all of these are at no charge, community interactive groups, boy/girl scout troop meetings and events, American Legion 5th District monthly meetings, Celebration of Life/Family Space following internment at Fort Snelling, Richfield Red and Blue Committee Holiday Santa Claus Program, Food Drive for Local Food Shelves, Blood Mobile, and other groups, and the list goes on. Priority two, new programming priorities under review will focus to improve the quality of life for community and veterans. Post home to five to six AL, American Legion/VFW posts without a physical building, approximately 3,500 veteran members, free daily hot meals to veterans and others while offering therapeutic socialization programs, host district and state American Legion conventions on site, continue to offer affordable space rental and no-charge meeting space with convenient/dedicated parking available to groups of 40 to 400 people, scholarships for education, basic living assistance, and other support services, veterans-focused housing/affordable housing initiatives, satellite food shelf and/or community veteran support services on site, and the list goes on. Post 435 will continue to explore a full scope of current and new programming options based on needs assessment statistics and partnering with those best to deliver services. With this said, the following building support amenities will need to continue for full access to all programming choices. Dedicated/convenient parking for 100-plus cars/buses daily, a separate loading dock, special and regular storage, patio and outdoor space, sound/pa systems, convenient ease-of-access daily. Note, the Post 435 top priority for a standalone prominently-placed building was communicated in the small-area study input process. The new physical building will be the key in the American Legion's ability to successfully serve the diverse and growing needs of the membership and community. In closing, I extend an open invitation to Richfield community and civic leaders in continuing the dialogue started in 2020. I'm confident that exploring mutual benefits toward common goals will serve the city, community, and American Legion for the betterment of business, community, civic, and residential stakeholders. Thank you, Commander Siemens. Before making a motion and then the discussion, I would ask our city attorney, is this something that I would do the first item and then the second and third item separate from the first, or can they all be done together?
Mayor, Councilmember Wayland, actually, the way it's spelled out in the recommended action, I would do number two as a separate motion, and then you can do the second reading and the summary publication resolution together.
Okay, thank you. So I guess per that, I would first move to approve the attached resolution adopting the Portland and 66th SubArea Study.
Second?
The motion has been made by Councilmember Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Any comments or questions on this item? Councilmember Supple?
First of all, I was pleased to see that you added the bird collision reduction policy because that came out in a lot of the comments and things. So I was glad that was added. And then I wanted a little bit of clarity. I know that you're wanting to have some green space between the buildings and the park. So there was also expressed that you would like to have parking next to the Honoring All Veterans Memorial. Would that be considered a buffering thing to have the parking there, or would that be excluded? I was just wondering how that all fit together.
Councilmember Supple, the way that it's written right now, the preference is to have buffers of green space and landscaping adjacent to the park. There's also a requirement for tree preservation. So on that particular side of the property, on the north side of the property, we would generally consider that line of trees that would be preserved to be the landscape buffer and that way afford parking to be on the north side near the memorial. Also, the way that the access is going to line up based on Hennepin County's requirements, it's almost certainly going to require the driveway to remain in almost exactly the same location, which would also favor parking on that north side of the property.
Thank you. And then, given Commander Siemens' comments, can you talk about whether or not a standalone building would be allowed in what we're currently voting on?
Yes. So currently, if the Legion wanted to continue to use their property as they are, as a standalone property, they, like any other user, would be able to continue to do that as a legally non-conforming use. In fact, they are a legally non-conforming use right now. Under the new ordinance, or if they desired a change to their property, they would be required to follow these overlay district rules. The reason they're written the way they are is because the Comprehensive Plan designates that particular property for multifamily residential. In order to accommodate and honor the fact that the Legion has been there for so long, we've worked to incorporate some commercial space into a multifamily zone and property. We've done that by allowing it to be part of a multifamily building. Now, moving forward, if you adopt the overlay district, the Legion's options, if they wanted to do both housing and space for Legion, would be to comply with these regulations or perhaps apply for a variance or develop the property as a PUD. Under a PUD zoning district, you would be able to examine the property, look for unique characteristics, things that would be especially valuable to the community, and perhaps make an exception under that.
Any other comments or questions from folks? Councilmember Wayland?
I guess, no fault of, I understand people can't always make a meeting, but I guess I am, having just seen the comments from the Legion today, I'm honestly a little confused as to whether that means they are intending to continue using their property as is, if they are announcing what they plan to do within these new proposed, the overlay district, or if they're saying they disagree with it. And I guess I, I was pretty excited about, and I thought served the needs of everyone involved, the idea of having a multi-use building with them on the first floor, but still with adequate, or maybe even the first and second. I can't remember if they had gotten that specific, but to have some commercial space. And I guess I would appreciate if they are really interested and dedicated to this standalone building proposal. I would appreciate at whatever point, I mean, we often have multiple conversations before a specific development proposal gets approved. I don't yet understand what is gained for them from that as opposed to the being part of a separate building. And so would hope to continue that conversation with them. But I am still, I mean, they continue to have in there the desire for veterans' housing, which I think makes perfect sense to combine with the continued use they're looking at for the sake of the Legion and these other community groups that utilize their space. So I'm still hopeful to come to a solution that meets everyone's needs. And I do think that the, I know we're still only on the item of the study, but yes, I guess I just would appreciate more conversation. I'm not sure that these comments clarified their, if they are happy with or have frustrations with where we've ended up at the end of the moratorium. And I don't know if staff has heard any further comments from them.
Mayor, members of the council, you know, we have continued to dialogue with the Legion throughout this process. I believe they're still exploring their options and they don't have a development concept yet. As they continue to do that, they would obviously need to continue their discussions with us and we could work through some of those things. But at this point, my understanding is that this is still very conceptual from their point. And so it's hard to discuss specifics at this point.
Madam Mayor and council members, I just wanted to clarify one issue as well. In the event that they were to redevelop, Manager Palin talked about the ways that they could Manager Paleman talked about the ways that they could incorporate a multifamily and fall into the zoning, either as a PUD or other ways of doing it. If, however, they were part of a redevelopment, it would have to include some form of multifamily in order to meet the overlay zoning requirements. So, for example, they couldn't have a commercial building, you know, a Starbucks, and the VFW, that wouldn't meet the intent of the zoning ordinance, so they would have to have some housing component.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
So just a couple of questions. I also share Councilmember Wayland's confusion as to whether this means they support it or not. I do think it was a well-done study, and I'm really happy with the recommendations for the Legion site, so I will support it either way, but anyway. I was curious, this item about wanting a freestanding commercial building, I've only been aware of it for like the last two months. Have they been saying this from the beginning, or has this changed in the process?
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. When we began this process, we had not heard specifically about a standalone building. We did hear about it through the process as we met with them, but it was not initially, as I said, I do believe they're still exploring, and they're very early in their process, and just don't know the specifics of what they'll be doing.
Okay. It is, yeah, I want to be a partner with them, and I know they've done so much for the community as is listed in this letter, but it is a little frustrating when it seems like different stakeholders have different opinions, and it's not like a single applicant. In fact, at some points, it sounded like we're building the building, and I just want to emphasize for anybody watching, they own this land, and it's their decision whether to redevelop it or not. My one clarifying question about their sort of existing non-conforming status, if they leave their building exactly where it is, they fix whatever needs to be fixed about it, could they like sell the back half of the lot to the multifamily? Or are they not able to build anything unless they tear down their building and start over?
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. I do not believe they would be able to sell off the back half of their building to do something else without rezoning the front half of their building. The entire site is guided for multifamily, and so, once they start making changes, they'll need to comply with these or ask for permissions to do otherwise, either through a PUD, through a variance process. And if they were to subdivide and only want commercial on a parcel, then they would need a comprehensive plan amendment and a zoning amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Wayland.
I just want to say thank you, we're focused on the Legion, understandably so, but just want to say thank you to all of the neighbors in the area, the other folks either who come to the park or who live right next to the park, who contributed to the study. Would encourage folks who are interested in diving into the details. The sub-area study does have all of the comments that were received. It's the full, like, raw data, what we heard from folks, and that's, just really appreciate people sharing their input, and want to, I think the main question that we've hopefully already answered in previous conversations about this, but I think the main concern was, are we trying to redevelop the park itself? And just want to reiterate that that is not the case. There is no development plan for the park itself. And then also echo Councilmember Hayford O'Leary that the city does not pursue redeveloping any of these properties, that this is guiding the use for any private owners who decide to sell to a developer or redevelop it themselves.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Other comments or questions? I will just add a comment. It would have been great to have the commander here, too, so we could ask him some questions about the letter, but the council did receive the letter that Councilmember Wayland read earlier today. My interpretation, but it could be incorrect, and, you know, I feel like what he had included in the details of the letter were kind of the desires and the uses, and that does sound to me like that's something that they would discuss with a developer, a proposed developer that they would partner with and sell to. So again, I'm not necessarily sure on the intent of sharing that with us. I didn't necessarily see what was in there as conflicting with the overlay district, again, as that's more bigger picture and guiding the development versus the details and the uses. And those are some of the things that they have the ability to discuss and determine with their partner. But again, I guess I'm just not sure, so maybe we can follow up with them in the future and confirm that or not, but those were the only comments I had about the letter. Other comments or questions? All right, so the motion has been made and seconded, and we've had our discussion. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The resolution has passed, and then we have another one.
Okay, then I will now move that we approve a second reading of the attached ordinance establishing regulations for a new Veterans Park Area Overlay District and rezoning properties to be subject to said overlay district regulations, and then approve the attached resolution authorizing summary publication of that ordinance establishing regulations for the new Veterans Park Area Overlay District and rezoning properties to be subject to said overlay district regulations.
Second.
Any council discussion on those items? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motions have passed. Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. The next item is for Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. This item, we are considering a resolution approving a final plat for Lyndale Oaks Second Edition. The proposed plat combines the three parcels comprising the Link 65 redevelopment site into one parcel. Development plans and a preliminary plat for the redevelopment project known as Link 65 were approved in April of this year. The applicant has now advanced to the final plat stage of the plating process. The proposed plat would combine the three parcels comprising the development site into one new lot. The final plat is a technical document formalizing the combination of land comprising the development site, and is not a reconsideration of the land use approvals for the development. The proposed final plat request meets requirements and is consistent with the preliminary plat. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the attached resolution. Does staff have anything to add?
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, I will just clarify, because it came up as part of the development, that this final plat does dedicate the appropriate right-of-way at the roundabout for all of the roundabout pieces, as well as the adjacent rail. So that's all been accommodated within the final plat.
Thank you so much for clarifying that. All right, I will move that we approve the attached resolution approving the final plat of Lyndale Oaks Second Edition.
Second.
Any council questions or discussion on this item? All right, the motion has been made by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion has been approved. Thank you very much. The next item is our City Manager's Report with City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. So last meeting, we had two speakers at the open forum. The first was the gentleman, Mr. Hall, and he just commented on a planning commission meeting, and then stated his opposition to organize stalling, and some of his concerns were addressed at the meeting later. And then the second speaker was Ms. Titi, and I hope I got her name right. And she is interested in a tattoo shop at 7001 Nicolette. That's currently zoned C1, which is neighborhood commercial, and so it is not an allowable use there. And we did just recently make some changes to allow tattoo shops in C2, which was a big change. And so in order for her to open the tattoo shop there, it would require either a comp plan amendment, or we would have to allow tattoo shops in C1, which is neighborhood commercial and is less intense. We have not received an application from them. And then I just wanted to revisit again our mask policy for public meetings and give a brief COVID report. The graphs look really good. They're exactly what you want to see. We continue to see a very sharp decline in cases and a very good uptick in vaccinations. And for Richfield, for 12 and over, it's up to 75% already. Children 12 to 16 are getting vaccinated really quickly, which is great to see. We still do have disparities. Those are starting to close, so that's a good sign as well. And I would just ask for a council input on whether you want to continue to mask up at meetings or if you want to go another meeting. And what kind of information do you want for future city manager reports in terms of COVID?
Any feedback from council on any of those items? Councilmember Wayland.
I would say, as someone who was initially, have no health background, but was initially quite nervous about getting rid of the mask mandates, that I think the numbers are showing that it has been relatively safe and low risk, and so I would be comfortable, I know as a council, we've talked about that we're all vaccinated. I know that we, not everyone who's going to be attending is going to be vaccinated, but I think that the science behind it, and also the experience of the numbers still dropping, show that I'd be comfortable with no longer wearing masks at meetings if others are. I'm also okay if we want to continue doing it, it's not a big deal. And in terms of information, I think it is helpful to continue hearing vaccination rates, and especially kind of the updates on disparities, and hopefully they continue to close. But I, again, because it seems to be mitigated or reducing its prominence, the pandemic as a whole, I think we don't need to spend a ton of time on it each meeting.
I would agree with Councilmember Wayland about the masks. I think I've also been one of the folks kind of pushing to keep that, but the disparities worry me, but I also realize that this is like one of the very few places people are wearing masks at this point. So if, unfortunately, the disparities exist in a lot of areas, and given the progress that we made, I am comfortable stopping with masks in council meetings.
And I would be fine if we didn't have to wear the masks. I mean, I will if you want us to, but I don't think we need to.
I'm fine not wearing them as well. I'll probably continue to wear one since I'm still seem to have a cough, but I'm fine. Other items on the City Manager's Report? Other questions or comments for the City Manager from council? All right. Thank you very much, City Manager Rodriguez. The next item is Claims and Payroll. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, do you want to pass Claims and Payroll?
I move a verbal of Claims and Payroll.
Supple, second.
Claims and Payroll has been moved by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary and seconded by Councilmember Supple. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Claims and Payroll has been passed. The next item is Hats Off to Hometown Hits, and we'll start with Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. A few items, I know we mentioned it last time that it was going to open, but the pool is now officially open, and it was exciting to see. A couple of times I've driven by it, it is quite packed, especially when it was very hot, as one would expect. So exciting to see folks back enjoying that. The second thing, that this Saturday, I believe in the morning, the Sustainability Commission is hosting a invasive species removal effort, volunteer effort at Woodlake Nature Center. So if you want to come and meet some other sustainability-minded folks, remove some garlic mustard from our nature center, would love to have you there. And then, want to give a huge shout-out. I don't know the specifics, so if other council members are more well-connected and want to comment on it or more well-informed, but just want to lift up the great work that our school, Richfield Schools, have been doing the last several years, that I think it's within the course of like three or four years, they have almost entirely closed the racial disparity in graduation rates, which is astounding. It's at, I think it is 0.9% now. I don't remember what it was, but it was in the double digits like most places. So, huge hats off to them. Obviously, still work to do on racial disparities in our community, but that was exciting to see. And then the last thing, I have started getting resident questions about what the Fourth of July, Red, White, and Blue Days celebrations look like this year. Would encourage you to check, there's been a couple of different places where updates have been posted, but the short version is that decisions had to be made back before vaccinations were even available to anyone who wanted one. And so many of the big-ticket items have been canceled and were canceled a few months ago, but they're still having, I don't know if it's the official name, but the Little Sparkler Event with some activities, like a medallion hunt and a movie in the park and some other things. So would encourage folks to check that out, because that's only about a week and a half away.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wanted to thank the Red, White, and Blue Days Committee for all the work that they did, because I know there were a lot of decisions being made when there are a lot of unknowns, and they have stepped up and done wonderful jobs over the years, so thank you to them. Also, I wanted to point out that the Arts Commission has a new arts brochure that shows all the places around town that you can see public art, and so please be sure to check that out. You can find it on the website, and I think they probably have copies of it at the community center as well. And finally, because things are getting better with the pandemic, there's going to be at the state level an ending to the eviction moratorium, and it's going to be drawing to a close. So if you need help with back rent, you can go to RentHelpMN on the internet. You can contact 211. Or if you call Veep, they'll help you with applying for funds, and their phone number is 952-888-9616. So you can contact Veep, go to RentHelpMN, or contact 211 if you need rent help. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I didn't have anything big, but there was one particular residence personal project that I thought was really cool. Cole Hui, a newer homeowner in Richfield, ran every street of Richfield, like every single block of every single street. So I thought that was a really cool task. I know early in COVID, I was personally doing a lot more just like random neighborhood walks, and when you actually do that, you know, it's tempting to just like drive to a lake and walk around a lake, but when you actually do that, you just notice all these cool things. So I thought that was a really ambitious project to see every single block, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. And I have a couple items, so I just want to remind folks that we do have entertainment in the park at our band shelf, so you can find the information on our website, on social media, but Tuesdays from June 8th to August 3rd, we have concerts. We have kind of, it looks like we have a day concert at 11:00 a.m., and then we have a 6:30 p.m. concert. So we do have flyers online. You can go to our website, we have Spanish and English flyers, so if you want to do something with your family during the day for your lunch break or you'd like to do something on Tuesday nights, just make sure you know we have our entertainment in the park going on right now. And then lastly, well, two other items. We have a great article online on our website that talks about 10 Summer Fund Guarantees for 2021. So with places opening back up with some events canceled, I think there's just general confusion in the community of what's on this summer or not. And our staff did an excellent job of outlining 10 different things you can do this summer with your family, with your friends here in Richfield. They include going to the pool, enjoying the parks, stopping at the farmer's market, participating in our Urban Wellness 5K and Marathon, celebrating with your neighbors on Night to Unite, paddle boarding, all kinds of neat things that you can do. So check that out on our website, on our city website, and it's called 10 Summer Fund Guarantees for 2021. And then a couple other items. Let's see here, I was going to share a bike event, but it looks like that is full. We did get a little bit of media recognition. It seems like we have a lot of saving of animals throughout the summer months and in the spring. So apparently, we got a letter of support from PETA, and on June 10th, our fire department was called to assist a trapped cat at a residence home that was stuck underneath the dishwasher. So the cat's name was Waddles. We were able to get him So the cat's name was Waddles. We were able to get him saved and taken care of, but just another story, one of many stories that our firefighters engage in in saving animals in this time. It was Waddles the cat. So thank you to our firefighters for that. And that's all I have for my comments. So seeing as we have no other business, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone. Good night.